Okay, need a motion to sign the warrants.
Motion to sign the warrants.
Second? All in favor?
While that's going around, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 29.
I'll second for discussion of those minutes.
Yes.
I'd like to see an addition into the water department discussion just about the fact that it was noted that treasurer's report is an annual expectation of the water department and has been performed for like two years.
So how do we handle that?
I want to add it to the note. It's not in the discussion piece on the water department.
I think Suzette, investigate. I saw that the discussion doesn't have to be included, and since it's filmed, it's on tape, I would say that the only reason why you wouldn't have a singular person describe a discussion is because they may eliminate certain things that either they didn't remember happened or wasn't talking about.
Well, they gave figures in here on money that, you know.
Well, that's factual, but a discussion is opinion.
Well, it's factual. They have not met the law of submitting a treasurer's report for the last three years to the ratepayers. That is factual.
Okay, okay, I got that.
As Suzette said, though, the only thing that needs to be made is the motion, the second, the vote.
Well, that's a recommendation of Robert rules in regards to rules. There's nothing that states that's what has to be.
But that's the minimal that you have to have.
Correct, the minimal. That's that you can't have more.
We could have more.
Yep, that's my point.
And then we get across, we get this issue from anybody and everybody. I mean, someone else could say, I did miss something or didn't miss everything.
We did discuss.
We'll work on it in the future. How's that?
I think we have five people here that can talk about whether there should be discussion included. Thank you for your input, Mark. Dan Wagner, what do you think? Well, I don't remember. Did we ever have discussions in the last nine or 10 years?
Yep.
We put brief discussions in?
Yep.
And now because of Robert's rules order, you don't want to put any anymore?
No, I just don't want to have to keep going back and watching these videos and spend a half a day to make sure I have everything that's in.
That makes sense.
Do we have a motion or second on adding that to it, or?
No, we don't.
No.
No.
What, so being the?
Well, I guess, did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion and then we add it.
Okay, I'll second it. So we should have, now is the discussion. Mark was right. We can do the second.
So putting it in there, I think would be beneficial, I suppose, I'd like to think our viewing audiences, not as large as we'd like it to be.
And here's my only point. If come this May, we don't have a report for the annual report again, last year we asked them. I know, since this whole thing has started, Suzette has shared forms of treasurer reports. I know the PUC has shared, and we don't have it, you know?
Well, I think that makes sense. It's not, I guess it's not really a discussion. It's more of a matter of fact.
No, it's fact, and then if you don't have it, we're asking for it.
We haven't received a treasurer's report, and we like it.
Right, on this date, we asked for it. Let it be in the next one.
Well, and you have anything to say, Dan? So we're done with discussion? All in favor of adding the, what Nancy suggested?
Thank you.
So you have it in an email, which you want it said, right?
Yeah, yes, you did.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can make a motion to accept the minutes, including?
Accept that, yeah.
Including the new addition?
Correct.
And we have a second? All in favor? Okay. So I guess we're getting the town website updated, and Suzette's got some quotes for us to look at?
Yep, there's all kinds. There's three in there, and then there was one that came in after this was cut out.
And the bottom line is, how much for it?
Civily is the lowest one. It's 2,600 initial setup, and then it's $400 a year. If you want them to fully manage the site, it's optional. It's 350 a month, but I don't see that expense being over.
I thought it was 1,200 a set up?
I meant 1,200 a year. It's 2,600 initial, that's the one-time setup, to set it up and put everything from our website onto that one.
So what's the 1,200? It hosts it?
That's the, it's this description, yes. Technical support, unlimited training, easy-to-use interface, free .gov domain, which we already have. Mega site search, local weather, SSL certificate, all security updates, site backups. This will make sure our website is ADA compliant when it's repplied in a year or two.
And what are the other quotes?
The other one was, they were like 3,000 up. One of them was 9,000 unless we signed a three-year contract.
And is she local or he, whoever does?
This one here, which is?
This?
That's civily. That's the one that we've talked about.
Is civily local, or?
Having reviewed them, do you have a recommendation for us so we don't have to?
Civily is the most cost-effective. It's $400 annually after the initial setup.
Does that meet what you were asking for?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure we have to go with the lowest one anyway.
Yes. The one, the only thing that, this one here, they do like mass emails and texts. They'll do like, if something's entered on the calendar or something, they will do a mass text or email, however the person chooses, but they will not, every time there's an update to it, they won't go in and send another mass.
And that's something that Suzette and I had talked about, because it's another way to reach out to the people. If they want to participate, they can. Either by email or phone number, they'll get texts and or email notifications of meeting changes or any of those.
What?
She swapped, she, we shuffled around and got estimates on other websites of people in the area, and civily was the lowest one.
What was the name of the company?
Civily.
Civily.
Is it local, Suzette?
No, it's not local.
None of them were, right?
None of them are.
I looked at, none of them are local.
For the bit of what?
Um.
What?
Initial setup was 2,600. Twenty-six hundred, and it's 1,200 a year.
Well, I do everything with GoDaddy, and they're fantastic.
And you've got the money?
And an optional 350.
Yes. Yeah, but I can't see asking for them, for 350 a month, for them to host it, no.
Yeah, I don't think we need a monthly one either.
I would move that we go with, what was the name of that?
Civily.
Civily.
Yeah.
For the amount of 20?
Was it V, S-I-V?
C.
C-I-V.
K-L-L-Y.
Oh, it's up here. That's why I can't find it.
For the amount, for the amount of?
C-I-V-A-L-L-Y.
$2,600 for the initial setup.
When are we going to start this next, we're talking next budget season, correct?
No, there's only money in the budget.
She's got the money in the budget now.
Yeah. There's $2,000 in the web line, and then there was?
In your?
There was something else in somewhere. There was something over that we covered.
Well, I think out of your contingency, I think it was where we talked about. So for 2,600?
Out of our contingency?
Her.
No, no, general.
Suzette.
And there was also something else.
Does that include what, posting fees?
Yes. It's 2,600 initial setup one-time fee plus 1,200 a year. So the first one, yes, the first one's going to be 3,800.
So for 2,600?
So you made a motion?
For 2,600 to civily.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Yeah, I think you did a good job researching that.
And the more, the more you can, you can, you guys can put that out there, that if anyone wants to participate, like if the town office is going to close on Thursday because of the snow, they can put a text out, and whoever's on that texting free will learn about it. Or if there's meetings that are?
So is there going to be a sign up for texting?
There will be. Once we get this all done with.
You'll have that, and you sign up for notifications, then you get a mass. Oh, that's good.
And that's, you know, when we have a town meeting or any time when people are coming here, we can ask them if they'd like to?
Yeah.
Sign up for it and grow that list.
And since you mentioned closing tomorrow, that's going to be on the, we might as well, we can discuss it right now.
The state's closed.
Yeah, the state's closed, medical center's closed. I make a motion we close tomorrow because the weather's really going to be bad.
Like what? So we get a motion and a second. I'd say stay open until 11 o'clock or 12:00 and see what it looks like.
When's it, okay. What do you think, Nancy? Yeah, we can, we've done that. We've come in and?
We have done that, and the weather report is if, my only, the state has already announced all state increases and shortcuts.
And even the medical center's closed, but yeah.
But I know if you will get the state, it's more in states.
What we'll do is we'll wait till the morning and assess the situation, and if it looks like coming, like the other day, the snow didn't come till 3:00.
Yeah.
So we stayed open until?
I'd like to lean on our road manager, too. He's probably up to speed on the weather. What are you seeing?
It's not giving its stat until mid-morning.
Oh, okay, so we could stay open in the morning.
The medical center should be open. It's on my purview, but that should be open.
Oh, okay.
I know.
Good thing it came today.
And plus, it's probably hitting Augustus three hours earlier.
This is in Florida.
I mean, it's been, if I might.
Or Aruba.
Okay, Mark?
It's been my experience in the past that the highway foreman usually is in communications with the manager or Suzette, in this case, and then you two, we pass it on to the chair, and the three of you would make a decision.
Sounds good to me.
I mean, it's simple.
Sometimes we don't want to bother Nikki, because he's like out in a plow truck, and we call him on the phone.
But he's probably the one, like tonight, he has more of a handle on what's going to be happening than?
Okay, so you're thinking you're not going to be heading about 10:00 or so? I have my thoughts.
It's 8:00 AM when I just watched it.
You just, well, you watched it. I don't know the weather app. I don't know if we're talking about this. So while we're doing this, I would love to hear from Jason. I'm going out of order, but Jason's here to explain the Marion minimum weight charge.
Basically?
Come on up, come on up, or stand up so we can see your?
Basically, what we've done is we've gone back to the way it was for 25 years. If you come in to Marion with under 100 pounds, you pay the $7 at the office in Marion. They did change it a while back. Somebody did. And it was $1.20 per 20 pounds. So, and it was getting billed to the towns. The towns hated it. Their accounting hated it.
There's too much accounting.
Yeah.
So you just pay for it when you're there, then?
Yep. If you go in with 99 pounds, you pay $7. If you go in with 40 pounds, you pay the $7.
So it would behoove them to have their trash picked up, and then they don't get?
Or say, go with the?
Or wait till there's 100 pounds?
Yeah, I mean, 100 pounds is not?
It's not a lot of trash.
Well, take the neighbors.
It's like, what, five bags of trash or something?
Three to four.
You know?
For some people.
Some, some, some people, it's a half, some people, it's a half a bag.
All right, well, then, so it went back to what it's always been for 25 years.
Yes.
Mike?
I'd like to ask a question. My garbage is paid for the weight of it by my taxes, correct?
Uh, Jason?
Yes.
Yes.
So when I go there and I have to pay for my garbage, can I redeem the receipt at the office with the tax money that was set aside to pay for my garbage?
They're saying, they say they want you to wait till it's 100 pounds, otherwise they don't want to do the billing.
That's for the delivery of it. And I've been, personally, I'm one of the people who takes my own garbage to Marion. I like to ride. I usually go to the store afterwards. And I know it's 100 pounds, so, because of the scale, and I had once previously been involved with that group.
So you don't get charged if it's 100 pounds?
No, but for the people who do, because that's what they usually do, and if it's 100, they're paying on top of the tax money that should have paid for their garbage.
But the reasoning was it's minute accounting issues that's causing a lot of?
What?
Time-consuming accounting for 20 little dribbles and drobbles of garbage that?
Basically, what it was?
The rule is?
Is to get $1.20. Marion was spending $3.
Yeah, it was not cost-effective for Marion.
And unfortunately.
So under 100, it's just a straight $7. Is that the deal?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
But I guess the question Mike has, though, is we have already allotted tax revenue to our trash, and then he's bringing his own trash. Does he still pay?
Well, maybe we should have a reimbursement up here. The counting should go to us. Maybe we should pay.
I think that would be fair to the tax.
Won't make sense.
Well, that was going to be my expression. So we have raised the, we're raising the line for waste disposal. We raised it last year, right? It just gets, we've never had extra money in that line in years.
No, you always put more. It's up to 140 grand.
But I'm talking historically, like if we were to have 100 residents that, once a month, we're looking for $7 apiece because they go to the transfer station, will the line support that? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know if we could support a refund to people.
And if they come at 20 pounds, 20 pounds, 20 pounds, that's not fair to us either, because they can go up to 100 pounds.
Right, and I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can support that in that money.
So why should they be reimbursed?
Because their tax dollars are supposed to pay for their weight of garbage.
But the rule is, hey, wait, if you want to bring it yourself, you have to bring it 100 pounds.
I agree. It will, it will help some people manage their waste flow better and then go with 100 pounds. I've got it figured out. I'm sure other people will get it figured out.
That's the problem.
But I, what I want to know is, is will I be, you know, reimbursed? Or if any taxpayer takes their garbage, will they be reimbursed for having paid for it?
Well, do you think taxpayers should reimburse somebody five times at, five times 20 pounds, what, five times seven?
That's only the exact weight.
It's $35 because they didn't want to wait and bring 100 pounds? So I don't know.
Does it count for?
Ed?
I know there was 100 pounds or 101 pounds. It's above 100 pounds. Is my sticker number going to allow that to be charged to the towns? Yes?
Yes. Well, that's what I was going to ask, is if they take under 100 pounds?
The town of Lubec pays the tipping fees no matter what. What you're being charged, if you have somebody like Jason pick it up, is what you're saving by not taking it up yourself. If you take it up yourself, drive it out there. East Machias did it all the 20 years.
Oh, yeah.
And I was one that lived in an area where I could get it picked up, but I lived a mile off the road, so I had to send it out somewhere where the buzzers could get at it.
Yeah.
Yesterday doing that, I went up and dropped my own off. East Machias pays the tipping. All I do is pay the transportation.
So you're?
I don't see the town should, I don't see the town should give them back the $7.
The other method is they're trying to stop some of this flow in the summertime. I, I mean, Mike goes up there once in a great while, and he has a good amount. But Cooper and UT and places like that, you have people in and out of there in the summer with a trash bag. I mean, with, with just a five pound in and out. So that's part of it, and the other part's the revenue in the transfer station.
So you're just saying that they're not going to weigh under 100 pounds. If it's over 100, it goes to the town, and if it's under 100, then you're just paying a flat $7.
If it's 100, if it's 100 and over, you're all good. Town pays for it.
Yeah, I don't see that we need to reimburse the people, because they have an option to take it there for free, and they have to wait for 100 pounds.
And there's no differentiation between a contractor and somebody that isn't. So if you had a contractor, for instance, they wanted to take 15 trips up. I mean, so no, we can't get into that, because then you'd?
It's, it's one, one rule fits everybody.
Yeah.
Jason, I have a question. Okay, I go up there with a 30-pound bag. I pay?
$7.
I know, I pay $7 there. Does that ticket get shipped to Lubec?
No.
So they're not actually paying twice?
No. No.
That's what I thought.
No.
That ticket is just put in a separate bucket? It does nothing to them?
It's paying for the fact that you have to stop, get weighed, they got to take care of you, tell them where it goes.
So I just wanted to clarify that, that they don't get shipped to Lubec.
Now, I'm confused, because I have a sticker, and when I have over 100 pounds, I have, still have to go in and initial, the two tickets, the scale ticket and then the other ticket that is generated.
But you don't get charged anything.
And?
But it's not charged.
You're not charged, the tag?
No, but it's tracked to Lubec.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what we're paying for.
But they're saying that if you want to be an individual?
The exchange, the exchange is tracked to Lubec.
Smaller amount.
Over 100 pounds.
Yeah, under that, then you're kind of like on your own. In other words, you don't need a sticker even. Do you even, you don't even need a sticker if it's under 100 pounds?
Well, if you don't have a sticker, and you're not, you're not a member town, you pay 10 cents a pound.
Oh, okay.
So it's a $10 charge.
Oh, okay.
So you're going to reduce rate, but you still pay.
Okay, so that's good to know.
Member towns, you're 10 cents a pound.
Good to know.
Marion's a pretty good deal to sell it right now.
What, $7 under 100 pounds if you're a member town? So we still have to have a sticker?
Yes.
We got all that, John? Make sure Jason?
Trying to put people to sleep.
Well, Marion is an excellent county service.
Thank you for that. Okay, we have, we have an animal control officer that was, couldn't make it. She's going to come to the next meeting. There was nothing, she, I said she would have been on here on Zoom or on the phone, but I didn't have a question. I didn't think there was anything we need to ask, ask her right now.
I would assume that animal control is part of it.
So if there is, yeah, there is, well, we can discuss that. The problem with a stray dog that gets picked up, you can go to the ark and it can be, it'll be free. But if the ark is full, then they have to drive all the way to Bangor. So this is a place in Machias that's going to be $300 a quarter that will reserve a spot for us. There will always be a spot for, is it just one spot?
Along these?
No, I don't think so. I think it's anything.
Along these same lines, if I might, it would be nice if, on a monthly basis in our packet, we receive whatever their report is to the town of activity for them to be able to get paid, whether it's a seashell person or, or the animal control officer.
So we'll have to ask Penny to make copies of all the reports that people submit?
Yep.
I mean, you know, right now?
They're required to hand in a monthly report before they?
Have you ever seen one?
I haven't asked to see one.
Have you ever seen one? How long you been here?
I've seen which, which person?
Either or.
Yes, I've seen animal control reports.
I'm just saying that?
I've seen?
In the short period I've been here.
Every Harbor Master report.
I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about the ACO and the?
Oh, absolutely. The last animal control officer, she hasn't had a lot of activity, but?
No, she's had two calls, so she's been.
Well, that's fine. I guess I'm just trying to ensure that we're seeing something and that they're, maybe they warrant having more money because they're really busy.
The shellfish?
But I don't know that.
The shellfish warden, he, they usually report to, like the Harbor Masters sends the reports to the Harbor Board, and the shellfish goes to the Shellfish Conservation Committee. But I think that maybe the answer would be that you, if you want, if you personally, as a selectman, want to see the reports, to ask Penny. I don't know, we need all of that paper to be copied.
I was going to say, I could get, get in electronic.
Maybe as a board member, I'd like to have it somewhere where I can see it.
Well, then you can ask Penny, who takes the reports, and?
It's not my job to ask her.
Who's?
Well, Dr. Clark? No, yeah. I can ask her, and I can send them all up in a bundle in an email. Send them up in a month, once, once I give them, once she gets?
They don't, they don't have to be in the, in the printed ones, just in the email when it gets sent out. Thank you.
Jason's got a question.
Jason, yeah.
How many dogs does this $300 a quarter cost?
That's what I just asked. We were looking at that when we got sidetracked.
It's actually $400 a quarter.
No, she's changed it to 300.
She updated it.
We have a new contract.
Plus the cost of the dogs?
I can call her and ask her. She said she'd be available by phone.
I think it's just holding a spot for us, I think. Which is fine. You got to have one, so.
But then that's got to include it.
Well, she says to hold the dogs.
Corporate care, housing, and nursery for the animals and?
Right, she doesn't have a timeline, that was going to be my question, but she doesn't really say.
Yeah, how long do they keep the dogs for that $300?
Do we have a daily boarding fee? I would imagine.
Yeah, we need more information.
And in a lot of cases, we're at, when people do that for animal control, any of their fees, they charge them to the owner to claim the dog.
Yeah, we need more information.
Hold on just a second, I'll get her on the phone here.
Well, like, she's going to have, if she's going to have to be in contract, the other table.
She's coming next meeting, her husband's meeting.
But this is a, are we on a control officer's contract? It's not, it's her place?
No, it's Bubbles.
It's somebody separate.
It's where, it's?
It's not the animal control officer's place.
No, it's, it's actually the woman who cuts my dog's hair, you know, it's, and she's the new owner of that property.
Bubbles and Bubbles.
Well, so Bubbles and Bubbles needs to be a little more specific on that contract.
Well, and my next question? And my other question was, what contract do we have with the ark, and what do we pay them annually?
We don't.
We have, we have a contract with the ark. It says that they will take dogs if space is available.
And what, do they charge us to board them, or does it all apply to the owner?
It all depends, depends on if the space is available.
Because that was, that, that's my question in regards to doing this. Do we need both? Do we, you know, do we need to maintain the ark and this place, or are we just using this to hold them?
We're not billed by ark unless we actually bring them, somebody, correct?
And if it's available.
But we definitely want to keep both of them, yeah, I would think. Don't, we haven't made a motion or discussion.
Right, and that, does the ark charge us? There's no annual fee?
There's no annual, no.
If they don't have space, there's no guarantee.
That's right.
She's going to reserve her kennel.
Yes.
She'll be available, yeah.
So it's?
I think it's a good idea. But I would like to know if there's other costs besides that.
Right, but is she going to, yeah, and then, you know, if I would like something in there that, you know, any daily boarding fee you charge to the animal, but, you know, in the event that you have an animal that is not claimed, which, you know, is hardly not happen around here, but it could, then what happens? You know, would be my question.
So we're going to table signing this until the next meeting, correct?
No.
I make a motion to table the contract until we get a little more specification. All in favor? Road manager update?
I got a couple things. Just with this weekend coming in again, the weather forecasts are bouncing all over the place. The snow banks are stacking, get high. We haven't seen them in quite some time. We're trying to get it back. I know there's some resistance of where the snow is going, but we're not purposely putting anything in places that it can't go or shouldn't be. So please bear with us on this. Hopefully, temperatures will change here in a little bit, and we won't have to deal with that. But be careful packing, be careful on the intersections, because it is getting hotter to see, dealing with cars. So outside of snow, spring, May 8th through the 16th, we have to deck down these correctional facility on tap again for the spring. I talked to Bill yesterday, and our plan is, and that's why I want to throw it out to you tonight, so we can actually start planning this, if that's something you want to do, is sidewalk details. We want to experiment with the two short pieces downtown on Water Street in front of the tavern, in front of the old Water, Light Water office, Wonders Shop, as far as taking them blocks out and doing the same type of thing as what we did on the other sidewalks, forming it and make them concrete. As far as taking them blocks out and doing the same type of thing as what we did on the other sidewalks, forming it and, and making them concrete.
So you're gonna do some sample sections.
So I'd like to do those two first.
That's a great idea.
And now see how they actually do come out, because they got the granite fronts, we wanna leave the granite fronts there, put it back to it.
And just- But you gotta take the bricks out or just be catty.
Yes, and then do that, so we can see how that comes out.
So- Having said that, um, might you not have to expand that? Isn't ADA four feet at the minimum?
Don't think, because we're not taking it up, we're not.
The roads are non-conforming as it is, I mean, it's, you're just replacing disturb.
And we're not taking it up, we're not doing away with it, we're just reserved.
No, yeah.
And those are a liability in front of Frank's and the tavern, I think the tavern's had two potential lawsuits already.
It's just maintenance, it's really different.
I, I've had, I was gonna say, I've talked with the owners there a couple bit, and I wanna talk, the reason why I'm trying to get an idea now, so I can contact them
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
And see if that's gonna interfere with their spring openings or anything like that.
As long as you can replicate what you did before with them, I think it's fantastic, especially for the money.
Where, where?
Um, that last project you did down, uh, down in Dewey, it was fantastic.
Down this road, right? Oh, yeah, that's exactly right. And there was just, just make sure that the ramp up and down, when there's a curb cut there.
Yep.
Because there was one question about it with the DOT and the money, you're-
Yeah, it was this one here, and, and I mean, it was all because of hot talk.
Right.
This hot talk job's done, so the actual-
And we, and we got out of that state engineering bill, right? Didn't we back bail out of that?
We, we're done, we're not doing that.
Yeah, so I mean, this is great.
And I mean, I think with, when we do those two, I think that will give us a pretty good idea as far as continuing on to do the rest of those. But I just wanted to make sure that you guys is okay with that first.
That would be super. I don't think he opens that early, but he'll give you his check, he'll give me his number.
Wait, when's the marathon?
Twenty second of June.
You have his number.
Of June, okay.
Yeah, just find out, see if you've coordinated them. It's fine wine between April and the beginning of May.
Okay. It's, it's, it's going to be between the eighth and the sixteenth of May, for your work.
Oh, that'd, I think that'd be super, yeah, I think they'd be into that. Thank you, thank you.
If one of them did. Okay. Pardon me, thank you.
So we've had, uh, some, only two people come to the budget meeting for the past two, two meetings. So we're, um, in the charter, it says we have to have three people in the budget meeting, uh, at committee, and they have to be staggered, three-year terms staggered. And we've had, um, personal issues, illness, whatever, that's made one of the members not be able to come and made us think that this is really problematic for not just that person, but for going forward, that we would maybe like to create an alternate position for the budget committee, so, because you can't have committee with two, cause you can't have a vote. You have to have at least three people to have a vote. So, Mike Scovani has often, he's been at all the meetings, it, just in the audience, is willing to, be willing to do the alternate for this year, and that, I think that would be super.
No, we should have an alternate, and I, has anybody actually reached out to the third party to see?
They're coming, this next meeting.
Okay, good.
But I like to-
No, no, it's fine, I just-
I like to create an alternate, so I'll make a motion to create a budget committee alternate, second, all in favor?
Yep. You don't mind if I vote against you, do you?
I will.
Okay, I'll vote for you.
Was that a yes or no?
I'd vote for you, yes.
Oh, so that's fun.
Gotta listen.
I know, gotta listen to him. Okay, we're, we're good, we just, you have the paper there, question?
Thanks, Mike, for stepping up.
Yeah.
Keep it legal.
Well, that means he can actually sit up here and participate, he just can't vote if it goes through a vote. Puts a little less pressure on the budget people. Town vehicle insurance coverage. So someone, uh, questioned whether the town vehicles going over the international bridge are covered in Canada, and the insurance goes with the vehicle and they are covered. But normally we do not have town vehicles going to Canada, or we, I don't believe we should on a normal basis.
I'll throw myself under the bus, that was me that asked the question, uh, not having any history of it, and at least now we have something on file that's up to date.
Okay, uh, so, I looked at my, the next one on here would be, oh, loan, we got all these write-ins here, loan. So Suz- Suzette was requesting, they requested that she sign, what's it, eighty-six thousand dollar payment once a year for the loan?
Eighty-two thousand, six sixty.
So she, this has to be signed by someone from the town that agrees that it's direct, directly taken out, it's once a year, it's our loan payment for the next twenty-nine years
On what?
For the sewer treatment plant, and, um, it's eighty-two thousand seven, six sixty.
Sixty.
So I make a motion, we let her sign it, we don't have anything really, we can't really do anything about it, but they wanted an automatic payment, and they're gonna give us a thirty-day notice that it's coming out.
Do we get any benefit for the automatic payment?
We don't have a choice.
No.
Like, either it's automatic or you don't get the loan. We have a second?
Yeah.
I'll say it.
Discussion?
We already had it.
All in favor? Okay, so, Mike?
Regarding this length of the-
I got an email, they're hopefully starting to go to bid this summer. I don't know if they'll work through the winter. But it's looking like it's not gonna be finished this year. You're welcome.
So I have in here the town closing tomorrow at this state, so I would, my US Harbors' report, weather report, it says it starts a hundred percent snowing at ten o'clock.
To me, it's a town.
Snow showers start at nine. I mean, I think they should come in, but if it starts teeming snow at ten, I think we need, my theory, my belief is, you have to give the public at least an hour's notice that we're closing. So let's say it's snowing at ten, Penny could go on the website and say, well, close, we're closing at eleven. Does that make sense, or do they need two hours' notice?
What's it doing, what's it doing at three in the afternoon?
I mean, I have no problem-
Define snowing?
With snow for the six, six hours straight?
Define snowing. When it starts, if there's a flake or two, I mean.
Well, when, um, US Harbor says ninety percent snow, that's lots of snow, that's snow, that's like a whiteout.
I'm just having fun.
And my, my only thought is, if it is snowing and lousy weather, how many people are gonna come to town hall to do this?
Well, that's true, and I also don't want to be responsible for somebody getting in an accident going home. That's always been my theory.
You know, and even- Right, you know, so-
But, um, what was I gonna say? So your, your suggestion, Mark, that Dicky talked to Suzette and they talked to me, that's a good one, I don't think, that's okay.
You know, I mean, Dicky, Dicky's usually up to speed because he is the guy plowing. He needs to tell his people when to be ready to come in.
They're gonna call me about school anyway.
And, you know, and so, and I, we can't-
But it's a little, I think the school calling is a little different than the calling of the town office, because the town office employees are adults and they should know how to drive and-
Right.
Buses and kids going distances is different than-
Whether children are children and they're, you know, one of the-
So normally, that, what my experience has been elsewhere is that the highway foreman is in contact with, uh, the administrator or the town manager. And, you know, usually there's a lot of weight given to what you say, and then when they get, when the administrator or the town manager gets that information, then they let the chair know that that's what we're gonna do based on a conversation. I mean, I trust that you guys are gonna be doing what's smart and right. So, I just don't think it needs to be a-
And historically, it's been, uh, conversation between the chair and the administrator?
No, uh, yes.
Well, I've always gotten three, there's always at least three people on the board to agree to, to close, and they don't singularly close, you know.
I know you're calling that, right, right. Right, but, uh-
I mean, I think the chair could do that without, you know, without getting, uh, the vote of-
It hasn't been a problem, has it?
Yeah.
We've never had a problem. I, I get ahold of a couple of board members and say, what do you think, and they either say, I don't think we should close, or, let's see how it is.
No, I, I- I think this is gonna present per se-
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we're coming to work tomorrow and we'll decide when it starts snowing, how bad it's snowing. Mike, you're on duty again, Rogers Island.
Yes, Rogers Island. So, the septic system was repaired, I have a signed document from the, uh, plumbing inspector, which was transmitted to the DMR water quality person, and-
Special delivery, sorry. He's in trouble.
Oh my goodness.
Oh, you're not gonna stay?
I'm in my jammy.
And I was gonna mention the slippers.
And she was on camera.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike. I didn't hear you.
We have the, uh, we have the signed plumbing inspector's form in the hands of Eric Schaefer at DMR, there's a thirty-day wait, and then they'll inform the town about the condition of the flat, and then, because you closed it as an emergency closure, it will come back to you for its disposition. Of course, I will ask you to hold off on just opening it because we're trying to put flats into a rotation of openings and closures in this one.
Yeah, well, I think the select board's gonna defer to the, the shellfish committees, it's just a formality.
Right.
Right.
And, uh, on the clam front, I had a phone call after the last shellfish committee meeting from a gentleman who's writing a history of clamming. And he's not nearby, he's in the New England coast area, and he was wanting to know if there was some way that he could reach out and contact people who are shellfish harvesters, and I told him, we have generational shellfish harvesters here, and that this is where he wants to come and, and interview people. So I'm gonna try to help get him in touch with harvesters in our town, and, uh, we'll see where that goes.
Maybe we could put it on the website.
Well, I was, depending how it develops, I was gonna try to host something here and get, get it, uh, film recorded, uh, at the same time. But that's, we're way ahead, we're way ahead, first I gotta-
You need to tell them to come at the meeting just before the licensing and every, every shellfish person shows up.
That's right.
You know the good meetings, Carol, right?
Yeah, well, um, closed.
Yeah.
Now it's asleep.
That's worse.
You done, Matt?
No, I'm not done, I'm waiting for your board's, so I have the undivided attention. Thank you.
Okay, sweet as well.
There it is.
Enjoying that.
Thank you. And, um, the final thing is the Rogers Island survey, which will be on the town website soon, and we'll have questions available until April. And so nothing's gonna happen in the wintertime anyway, and this gives us time to process that, and I hope people go on the website and, uh, give us some input.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mike.
When are you meeting again?
March third.
Yeah, cause I used to be on that, I haven't heard it in months.
We meet the first mon, what do you, well, it's the first Monday of ever, of every month.
Shellfish, you're referring to shellfish?
No, Rogers Island.
We left it loose because of the distance of our members, and we're the management, we're the Lubec management of that committee, so we're, we're on top of it, Dan.
I remember that. Yeah.
And you're on there, aren't you?
I was. Okay, well, I just did not, abscond.
Well, they, they, cause he's on the committee.
No, he is, yes, he is.
Yeah, okay, if, if, if I'm missing something, let me know.
Okay, so we, we, we also had another question about municipal plates on the water district vehicle and trailer. And we, uh, the town staff looked up the government vehicle rule, section five one seven on title twenty-nine A, motor vehicle and traffic, and in section five seventeen F, it says, vehicles owned by a water district exemption. The following vehicles are exempt from registration fees but must register and are subject to extension requirements. So, they are allowed to have municipal's plates. As far as my question was, does that make us liable in an insurance issue, and our insurance?
It, it were.
It's, there's another one, it's for insurance.
And, okay, and the insurance, we're not?
No, it's at the back, um, another page.
It were.
Oh, I know, it's like-
There was another page to that, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. My only, my only comment is if they have municipal plates given to them by us, and I still have questions about whether they're authorized, because they are not a government, even though they fall underneath what government vehicle says, if we give them municipal plates, we are gonna be in the pocket of whatever happens along with them.
No, no, we're not, they have their own EIN numbers and their own corporation, and they're registered in their name.
No.
Not under those.
Okay.
We don't have those plates, no vehicle gives them.
That's right, BMV gives them.
Yeah, it's not, it's state, state.
But where are they issued at?
Augusta. We do not have those plates here. We don't, I don't even know if you can get them, I can't.
Okay.
Every ten years, they send us a stack of registrations, and I'm assuming Ruby, not Ruby, sorry, Renee might have done it last time, went in and updates the, the MVR three numbers and the expiration dates.
Well, I, I don't really-
And then she forwards them to the school, the water company, everyone else.
One of, one of, the only reason I had asked is because I know of a water company in a municipality, and they service that town as well as others, and they run regular passenger car or commercial plates.
They can, they don't have to have the municipal, the meeting plate.
Well, it would be, it would be nice of our neighbors to pay us excise taxes.
And we're looking about a thousand a year, compared to what it's gonna cost us in the end, and we have to actually go around and read the meters to get the numbers, cause you know it's gonna be a few.
Yeah, you know, it's, 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 it's been black and white right there, there's really no discussion. It's not, it's legal, it's not bothering the town, and-
Not all of it.
And, and I can bring, I'd like to bring up now that anything that has to go on the agenda needs to go, uh, to Suzette and not have them do a lot of work until it actually comes to the select board and we authorize them to do the work. Singularly, a selectman should not be going to the town office and asking the staff to do work for their own particular agenda that hasn't been presented to us first. And with that-
That would be me. I'll just throw that out there.
Committee updates? It's in the charter. No, committee updates?
I'll speak to harbor board, they've already, already, uh, divulged everything about shellfish. We still need a chair. I'm done.
Yeah, I heard that we need a chair.
We didn't have a forum last time.
That happens. He called everybody, texted everybody. What did you say?
Are we doing the Versant lights?
Oh, did we miss that?
Guys, wake back up.
He needs to come in, we're, we're supposed to have him in.
Well, I, you know.
I was waiting for the public comment, I thought I missed it too.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, last time we tabled it, cause I was losing my voice.
I'll follow up.
I did, um, I talked to somebody.
Did you have contact?
Canada paid for the lights, correct?
The lights on the pole, the lights on the pole, the lights on the bridge are DOTs. There's nothing we can do with, they don't even have a pole number, Dicky's talked to them. Um, the lights, the Christmas lights on the bridge I paid for on the Canadian side.
Interesting.
I checked with Wanda.
Okay.
So, and I asked her.
Didn't, didn't we approve some update on the electric?
Yeah, we, in some electrician.
But that was, that was like a year ago.
That's the pole that's on this side of the cover.
For a plug-in, though, right, yeah.
For the lights, I thought.
Well, that's what I thought it was, and I asked Wanda, and she said, no, that was actually, it's at Stockton Park, they put an extra outlet in.
Well, then that would be us.
Yes, but not the Christmas lights.
So then Conrad must have done the outlet for-
Oh, not the Christmas lights.
That's what I thought.
So the streetlights out on the bridge, cause they are all out, or like-
Yeah, that's a DOT.
DOT has to put them back out, okay.
What's, what steps have been taken since you've learned that to make that go away and be turned on?
Turn what on, what?
What steps have been taken since you learned that they're DOTs? Has been-
Dicky's, Dicky's talked to DOT. Today, yesterday?
So, when, when I got off the phone, sent you the message, giving you the first Ameri pole number, the pedal light open. The lights that's on the bridge is DOTs, they know they got a problem, but it's to the point, I talked to the regional crew supervisor here. He in turn sent a email that he copied me in to Augusta stating that there is more and more complaints because they're stacking up, that the lights are not working on the bridge. They're only responsible for half of them, the other half goes to Canada.
But there's none on, like-
And theirs are on on the other side.
Theirs working, ours is not. Uh, also, cause I didn't know it until I spoke to them yesterday down there about this, is
It's a tariff.
One got knocked over by the plow truck, and that hasn't been put up, and I think that may have been almost last one.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I, I look out my window every morning and-
Nancy says none of them are on.
None, I counted this morning, there was eight, and I couldn't see the bottom of the Canadian side behind the tree, so no objection.
Because I did, I was looking for pole numbers, and I went into customs and was talking with customs officers there, and we walked up and looked at the very first one that's right behind the post office, yes.
That one's on. Then that's it.
And that's it, he said, yeah.
And that's it, all the way to the other side?
But there is no pole numbers, he said it's DOT, and DOT doesn't use, uh, Ameri for these, it's a private contract.
Oh, really? Wow.
Who pays for the bill of the Christmas lights?
It's gotta be really dark up there.
But that's, that's the information, it is, it's, it did, go through the chain to Augusta.
Thanks.
Who pays the Christmas lights?
I wonder how long that'll take.
We have to have to reply.
Can we discuss with them, just a second, while I, as I said, it should party, something like that.
Okay, can you follow up on that for Dicky, please?
I'm tired.
Yeah.
Fine, okay, I'll talk to her, yeah.
It's gotta be dark.
Public comment?
Oh, anyway, wait a minute.
Public comment? Oh, actually Nancy wanted to do an update on the budget.
Well, I just, I just wanted to, I hate to be the money complaining person.
Well, you've been to the county budget, you've been to the AOS, you've been to all of them.
But, I just, right, yeah, I was representative on the county budget, I've attended all the school board meetings, I as well as attended and asked questions about the AOS budget. And my point of bringing this all to your attention is, we five have no control over any of this, we have control over only our part. So, I just wanted to think about this. The county government increased for us by a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, and remember their year is January to December. So halfway through next year, the county's gonna come up and it's gonna be more money than we already do. I went into the AO, I went into the SAD, the school board meeting on Monday to complain about the AOS budget, which is a public vote on the twenty-sixth for just the administration of the AOS seventy-seven. I went in there thinking I wasn't voting for that budget, but I came out of that meeting thinking I am voting for that budget. That budget has a thirteen percent increase, we go from one sixty-three to one eighty, so it's an increase of sixteen thousand dollars, but the work that that office gives us, the superintendent, the payroll, the human resources, we could never do it for a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that being said, that's an increase. So the school people got their budget last night, this is not their finished budget, they have not looked at the select board itself, but it has a fourteen percent local increase.
Which is, which is to how much?
Three hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred and two dollars. And the only other thing I wanna point out, the county budget, because I was on it, I know we took out capital improvements and expenditures that they should put back in that budget and it's, so that's a big impasse. I think the AOS budget, there's really nothing more, their budget is so basic, there is nothing in there for them to take out.
So are you saying the increase of three forty-three K on the school budget doesn't include capital improvement?
Well, they have some line in there, but I mean, they, they haven't addressed, there's nothing in there addressing some of the big issues they look at, like the bricks on the building and some of the other projects. And the school board has not looked at that budget, it was just presented to them from the superintendent and the finance person, but, that's being, they don't, and my only, my only other
So that's, that's half a million dollars.
My only other point with that are they are moving forward into that budget this year of three hundred and five thousand dollars, and they moved three hundred thousand forward last year. They won't have that kind of money next year to move forward, cause the state has now mandated that school systems can only have, I think it's five percent. So they can only have a hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars carrying forward. So next year, when they come to do their budget, they are not gonna have hundreds of thousands of dollars to move forward. So, my point being, we five-
Then they'll have to spend it, they'll have to use it to buy down the budget, no?
That should be slated.
Right, they're gonna have to up the, our input because they're gonna, right, right, you know, but they're not gonna have three hundred to put into it.
Right. So we're looking, we're looking at half a million dollar way.
We are, and so my point is being, the five of us, when we look at what we can control, and I'm not saying we should do these things, but I think we have to think a little differently, like, I don't know, a four-day work week, closing some hours, if we did a four-day work week and I did just quick numbers on a basic salary, and I know it's not gonna answer anything, you know, it could be like a hundred thousand dollars, we'd have to not have pay raises for a couple, like, there'd be a lot of work involved. We could look at, has been pointing out our recycling, maybe we get rid of that or closes, but I think, um, unless, you know, we can identify some places that we think we can take out some money, and the school board's gonna have the same thing, I'm thrown out, their high school choice could be a lot of money out of the school budget, that I just think that we have to have a conversation before we keep having budget meetings where we're looking at the lines going, yep, that one's gotta go up, you know, that one's gotta go up. We have to look collectively at what are our priorities.
I said in the budget meeting, we can't shortchange ourselves because of what somebody else is doing.
We have no control over these other things.
Well, that's what I just said. We can't cut, we can't shortchange citizens because of what somebody else is doing, we have no control over that, but we can't shortchange what these people want or need. So it's gonna be a hard decision that we'll have to make.
Well, we should- Well, it's really not our decision.
You should have some control over the school budget.
It's really not our decision. It goes to the people on votes, on, on every one of them. But it is our obligation to move forward a budget that is doable. You know what I mean, and, you know, so.
Jason?
What is the shortfall for the sewer treatment plant forecast to be?
It's awful in the audit.
I'm, I'm thinking right around one eighty is gonna be the shortfall.
Yep.
Yeah, compounded or just last year?
You know.
This year.
Going forward, because we have an eighty-three thousand dollar payment, or what, isn't that what that is?
Is it a hundred and sixty or a hundred and eighty, I think it was.
But you got seven hundred people to.
Over budget.
How, how is this in the past allowed to have been going on? Didn't, didn't you guys, because I wasn't here, didn't fifty-some-odd thousand come out of highway to go offset?
Fifty-seven.
I mean, that can't happen, so he, they, we need to make adjustments.
What? For the sewer? Well, the state, the feds or the state mandated that we upgraded it, what, the cost of five million dollars? And those seven hundred users? I mean.
Yep.
It can't all, it cannot, it's a whole community. It can't all be put on the tax, on the, on the users.
I, I agree with that, Carol, a hundred percent.
But I, you know, there's, there's gotta be something going on, something. And we've been raising the rates. We've raised them two or three times already.
When, when during the budget cycle will the waste order part of it be?
Each department head, each department head is coming and discussing it.
That's one of your critical infrastructure pieces, and.
That is critical. Yes. Bruce will be coming.
Yes.
You're not gonna have a town unless you got that.
I mean, you have what, fifty thousand in recycling?
To me, that should go.
I mean, forty-seven?
It's expensive refuse is what it is.
I mean.
I think we should have a secondary room.
I, I, I think because we can't sell anything with the cardboard.
I try to be responsible, but a fifty thousand dollar loss every year for expensive refuse makes no sense to me.
This community had a very large faction of people who believed in recycling.
I do too, but.
Over time, I believe that we've all come to the realization that we're, we're doing that at a great expense to ourselves.
Well, and the other elephant in the room is, we're talking where we can save money, make money.
Yeah.
The school budgets, what, seventy, seventy-five percent of our.
Fifty-five, I think.
Jason, can you figure out what it's gonna cost of all the boxes that we don't, like, if we don't recycle the boxes?
Yeah, it's always.
What's it gonna cost for the, for the Marion? I mean, what, what, what is the taxpayer gonna pay to get rid of all that stuff that we now take over there?
There's a person that will take the cardboard. So that's not gonna cost.
Well, you still have to collect it then.
When I, when I did, yes, they'll have to collect it.
Well, we could have what?
Well, what I did years ago when I got the numbers from Renee, is I figured out it was about five thousand dollars to get rid of everything else other than the cardboard.
What about e-waste and all that?
The e-waste, huh, there's another thing. In Marion, they started charging for e-waste because the company that comes here charges for e-waste. And we were just losing. We were losing money. We were taking it for free.
And I think one of the reasons why we weren't gonna close it was because they felt that these things were gonna show up on the side of the road.
Right.
That was the other thing, is that we were, we're making it so that the price is, is acceptable to everybody, so they don't get encouraged to ditch their garbage in the ditch.
It seems to me that the e-waste and the cardboard are the two things that we really need. And that will make some money, and the e-waste won't go on the side of the road. But all the glass and all of that.
Crushed the glass and throw it in the parking lot. It's totally inert. That's why we got the pulverizer. That saves a whole bunch of tonnage.
We talked about that.
You're using Marion, I mean, it's insane.
Can it go into sidewalks?
Throw it in the sidewalk.
We've been, that was Rachel's.
They're using it.
Put it in the sidewalks.
We're gonna start building sidewalks.
They're, they're using it everywhere else. Why don't we use it? Just saves ourselves a lot of money.
Sparkly.
It would be really nice.
There's, there's been times that they've hauled, they've had the hauler, trash hauler, take the glass of Marion after they crushed it. Not me, but when Jerry owned the business, there were many times he took the crushed glass and dumped it up in Marion.
Out of feet.
See, I don't. Well, plus you need somebody to crush it and.
Transcorp.
Yeah.
But can you use it in sidewalk?
I don't know if you get the compaction.
Okay.
I use it.
Could it be any more unsaid than those bricks wired for the past decade?
That's the reason why, that's the reason why we're in the mess.
Well, let's go, let's look from bricks to glass, see how that works, and make sure you have your shoes on.
The reason why your sidewalks depress is that no one followed what was told to us when we had those sidewalks put in. That they need to be pulled up every five years and re-sanded. And that never happened, so they just got lower and lower and lower. More concrete.
Yeah, we're gonna, let's, we're gonna put this on the agenda for next time.
So, speaking of missing persons, and was so enamored by our streetlight conversation, that I missed my conversation to tell you about Machias. I was over there today and I asked them, how many lights do you have? How much are you paying? So they should be getting back to me soon.
So we'll, we'll put that on the next meeting as well.
And then I can pass it to you, and then you can pass it to Suzette.
Well, you can go straight to Suzette.
Oh, no, Suzette, do you want?
No, when you can just put this subject now, not this huge amount of work involved with it, that has to go to the select board. In other words, you can't ask her to do an hour's worth of research before it even comes to the plan of the select board.
We're just getting started.
Suzette, so you, you have had a conversation with Versant?
Yes, I can't remember the person's name I spoke to, but they said that we have a hundred and thirty-eight streetlights that are LED.
So it's next to nothing to run.
On this paper, there was, I think, like, eight or twelve that were not. We could have them switched to, they were like a hundred watt, high power pressure, sodium vapor, blah, blah. And it's broke down, but how much do they have per month? And there's a hundred and fifty watt high pressure sodium vapor light, there's six of those at twenty-seven oh eight a month. And you could have it go to a LED.
Per, per light?
Per light.
That's a lot.
And you could have.
That's the thirty thousand dollars a year to run a hundred and thirty lights.
Yeah.
And half the town goes to bed at seven P.M.
Most of them, it's a hundred and seventy-eight that are thirty-six watt LEDs. They're eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents per light per month.
So did he say whether we can turn any of them off?
He said you can turn them all off, and none of them or all of them. He said that the best bet is to set up a work order, meeting, change order.
Yeah, good idea. That's what we wanted.
That's why I wanted to hear.
But we'd like to be able to drive with one of them, because for instance, we talked about last week.
Yeah, in the daytime, in the daytime.
We don't need a hundred and thirty, but there should be one at North Lubecan County. There should be one in front of the, I mean, pick.
Right, right.
That's not a bad idea.
Strategically, you know.
Intersections.
Yeah. And that's originally what they're for.
I can get some dates.
We don't need to light up like a Christmas tree.
We had a street light from my house, you know, in North Lubec, five miles down North Lubec. Why?
Do you know how many's on North Lubec Road? I do. Seven.
Why?
Back in the day, it was probably appropriate.
But you know what? You turn them all off, except for the ones that should be located for, on cross streets.
Can we do that?
And then if you want yours back on North Lubec Road, you pay for it.
So I think Dan, as much as that's a great idea, I think we should defer to the person from Versant that comes and tells us there could be certain ways that you have to have a light for safety.
Exactly.